And to your God, for which he sends one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. The town of Burlington will be holding the October 3rd, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under general law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting of remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via the following. TownofBurlingtonwebex.com is the URL. The meeting number is 2344-933-0203. The meeting password is 1645. You can join by phone at 617-315-0704. Please be aware, if you are seeking to participate using WebEx, we recommend that you do not use the browser version of the software because we've noticed that it's a little bit buggy. And so, we recommend everybody downloading the software for free and going about it that way. Those of you seeking to participate also, raise your hand in the WebEx and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. We're also streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page.
Thank you, Liz. First, second on the agenda, public participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online who'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Please come before us and you've got a couple of three minutes. Please state your name. And is anybody online after him?
Before I start, may I approach the bench?
With?
I just have pictures that are along the board.
Oh, okay, sure.
Can you give everybody one of these?
Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth, start the clock.
Okay, the clock has started, thank you.
So, my name is John Hickey. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a 62-year lifelong resident of Burlington. And I know the time is limited, so I'm going, I hate to read from notes, but I'm going to try to do it to expedite. I will say I'm a little disappointed that Joe's not here. He's still on the board, correct? Okay. He and I ran for office together 32 years ago, so I was like, you know, it's been quite a while since I've seen him. Anyways, more and more residents across town, as I'm sure you're aware, are becoming very concerned about the increasing number of teardowns in the building of, you know, 5,000 to 6,000-foot square foot McMansions. Many younger families, as you can imagine, can't even afford to live in town anymore. And in connection with what I would like to talk about, the house next to me on 12 Sarah Street, I've lived on 10 for 62 years, my whole life, was torn down. And the pictures that I just gave you is what was put up instead. That house that was put up, to say the least, is jaw-dropping. I know we can't regulate what people want to do on their private property. But that being said, the Fox Hill neighborhood and the street I grew up on, it was probably one of the premier neighborhoods in this town for over 30 years. And it still is an absolutely beautiful neighborhood. And this house is like bursting. It meets the bare minimum of the setbacks and the height requirement. A number of town officials are contesting the height requirement, even though it's already built. It's bigger than 30 feet high. Everybody that's come by this neighborhood, my neighbors, my family, my friends, members of the Board of Selectmen, other commissions, private citizens, Amazon workers, National Grid, mailman, you name it, they are astounded when they look at that house. And they, every single person, selectmen, everyone down the line says, this does not belong in a neighborhood like this. This is an office condo building, even though it's a private home. It's too late in the sense for us and our neighborhood because it's here. But moving forward, my concern is the aesthetic has been ruined in the neighborhood I've lived in for 62 years. My neighbors across the street are looking to maybe move because they look at it every day. And what I'm here for tonight is that I think our town government needs to take a much closer look at what we're doing to the character of our residential neighborhoods and act in a proactive manner sooner than later with some additional restrictions. I'm hoping that the Planning Board and asking actually, not hoping, asking the Planning Board in conjunction with the Zoning Board of Appeals, with the Select Board, wherever else it takes to start a conversation about what we can do moving forward. I understand there's bylaw restrictions where you can regulate setbacks and height and whatnot, but there's more that we can do as a community moving forward. I mean, you look at Victorian neighborhoods in Lexington, for example. The neighborhood I grew up in in 38 years will be 100 years old. I mean, I can't even imagine high Victorian neighborhoods in Lexington having split levels and ranches interspersed between Victorians. So, are we going to save the character of this town or are we just going to let this keep continuing? There are things that can be done. Select Board Chairman Joe Morandi was out to my house and he was astounded. He wanted me to let you know that he, I'm going to the Select Board and he wants to meet with the Planning Board as well and the Zoning Bylaw Committee to start discussions about creating some bylaws, new restrictions, additional rules around setbacks and height and whatnot, so we can move them forward to town meeting. So, thank you for your time. I'm going to look forward to hearing what will be done next. I will be going to BCAT and talk multiple forums in town because there are a lot of citizens that are very interested in the Planning Board in doing more to preserve the integrity and character of our neighborhoods.
Thank you, John. I'll just, I'll start, which is unusual, as you let everyone's. Yeah, I've become aware of this recently. It is certainly out of character with the neighborhood. And when we have design control, we do try to keep the character of what we're particularly telling center. We do not have design control over neighborhoods and that's something that, again, town meetings will have to wrestle with to put those in place. I don't know, I just asked staff, is there other towns that have design control over certain districts or things like that?
So, I did, I did do, I did reach out to my, you know, other planners in other communities. And there are, Wellesley and Lincoln have large house review bylaws, which are essentially single-family design review guidelines and site plan review process. But it would have to be something that town meeting would be willing to, be willing to, you know, pass.
Yeah.
And so, it's.
Would that be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw?
I think that it would be a zoning bylaw.
Okay. So, only majority?
Yeah. So, it would be, it would need two-thirds majority at town meeting if we were to do it. And it, we would need to create, you know, either have this board or create a different design review board, hopefully with some, like somebody with architectural background in architecture or engineering. And it would, it's, I think, I haven't really done a deep dive into what this is, but I believe that it's, if it's over a certain square footage, they have, you have to go through design review. But again, it would have to pass the test of town meeting.
I'm confident it will pass.
A second, yep. And I'll start with, thank you, staff. Go, Mr. Cavino?
Yeah. During, during the last master plan process, there were more than a few people who came up to me and said, you know, they're building this huge mansion beside me or down the street or whatever. Is there something we can do? And as Liz says, there probably is. I mean, obviously, it's going to, it'll be a zoning change. It would have to, the zoning bylaw change would have to pass town meeting. But I'm sure there's something that we could put in place. But what I also said to them and asked them if they'd be willing is that if we restrict the size of the house, you can put on the lot. Therefore, we're restricting the price of the house that we'll sell. And it will restrict the amount of money the builder is willing to pay them. And these were older people, my age actually now. And a few of them had appeared, to me at least, this was their, one of their big retirement assets and they really did not want to reduce the financial process. I'll have to think about it, as you said. But obviously, for the majority of us in town, and eventually, once it takes hold, it would, it would just be the norm. I think the feeling is it would be nice to be able to, maybe not go crazy, but I mean, if there was a, you know, a 1,800-square-foot house and lot and what ended up there was a 6,000 or 6,500-square-foot house, I think that's a little bit heavy, especially since we only have a 20,000-square-foot requirement. And if you go down Skelton Lane past CBS there, you'll see there's many of the small slab branches that are sitting on, I think it's 10,000 square feet or less. And those are still, it's huge houses.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's, I don't know how we solve it, but I'm, there appears to be a growing movement to try and do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Cavino. Ms. LaRue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is for staff, or actually, it's a request. You had mentioned Lincoln and one other town. Could you forward what they have as their bylaw to us? I'd just like to read it and see how they do it because my concern is, I understand that, I understand the concern and the worries of neighbors. And it's, it's one thing to change setbacks. It's something else to tell people what they're allowed to build because although some people may look at this and say, oh, that's terrible, it's an atrocity, for someone, this is their dream home. And I'm not sure it's appropriate for us to be telling people what their house should look like. And maybe there's a way to do that. I'd love to see how other towns have handled it. I'm a little concerned about it because beauty is in the eye of the beholder and I want to make sure we don't overstep. That's my concern, but I'd like to learn more.
Thank you. Ms. Sutherland?
I mean, I agree with what all my fellow board members said. I think also, I have similar concerns around kind of limiting someone's potential equity. But I agree that, I'm sure there's a lot of research and things we can look into to understand, like, how can we keep the character? You know, those 10,000-square-foot lots, how do we, is there something we can do with that? But yeah, I'm curious if some of the towns, if they're looking, if it's a 10,000-square-foot house that usually they have design review or what. So, something we should look into, but I have a lot of concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Impenbar?
I apologize, I was late. I had.
Joe, you missed my whole speech.
The youngest guy's birthday today. The oldest guy who lives in Miami was on the phone and, well, he was on the phone, so, you know, but anyway. Yeah, no, I get it. I mean, it's, you know, but I think a lot of towns have struggled with this as well. I think we're not the first. So, I think if we maybe look to some of the neighboring communities and see how they've dealt with it, and I know there was a big deal in Lexington with that and, you know, my mother-in-law was one of the ones that was saying, hey, you know, they're building, we had this old quaint little neighborhood and now all of a sudden they're coming in and they're building these monstrosities and we're, it's just, they're looking out of place. So, I think, you know, I think, again, rather than reinventing the wheel, we should probably look to see some of these communities that have already struggled and maybe worked their way through these things, how they've dealt with it. Because, you know, we may find some answers or at least some direction. You know, as to what, you know, whether they were successful in creating bylaws to prevent some of this stuff from happening or, you know, from at least restricting some of this stuff from happening, you know? But I think it'd be a good start, a good starting point because, yeah, I mean, I get it. You know, we certainly don't want to be looking like there's office buildings in our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Ms. Nataula?
Thank you. I agree with all the board members. I didn't catch the name of the street.
Sarah Street, S-A-R-A-H up in Fox Hill.
I too live in the Fox Hill area.
Oh, do you?
And I noticed, I live on Donald Road, but.
Yeah, I know.
I've noticed, like, even the houses that they knocked down, they build these massive houses.
Right.
And all through, like, Skelton Lane, where they would knock down the slabs, I often wondered what the people thought when you drive by and they have these huge mansions that go up.
Right.
And then, it's funny, just lately, when you drive by, you start to see, they're now in the minority. Every time someone sells the property.
Right.
And now the huge one goes.
Right.
So, I'm not sure, but agreeing with all the board members, it does really need to be looked at.
All right. Those houses are big.
To wrap it up, Mr. Hickey, any last comments?
Yeah, my last comments, thank you for your time. As I said, Joe Morandi was out. He and everybody else were flabbergasted and they want, the Board of Selectmen want to work with the Planning Board to start to effectuate some change and create some bylaws to go before town, town meeting. One last note, I reached out, we spoke yesterday, I spoke to Bedford. I got one town. They, they're in the same situation. They've actually created a committee that's looking at this problem around character and aesthetics and whatnot. They have an architect on their Zoning Board of Appeals to review something like that condo building that's in a residential neighborhood. And they're taking input from citizens online, in person, and they're actually moving to make some changes. So, Bedford's kind of a little bit ahead of hopefully where we'll be going.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Thank you very much.
You can start running for office again.
I just said, I was hoping you were coming, you and I, 32 years.
34, 34 was, 34, I'm almost 35, yeah.
It's hard to live.
Is that crazy?
Well, thank you very much. All right. Next on agenda is a discussion, the Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning District, that's Melissa Tinkopolis. I'm sorry, announcements, please, thank you. I'm ready, roll here.
So, quickly, announcements. We have the Burlington Flu Clinic, which is happening on Saturday, October 5th, this Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at Grandview Farm. And pre-registration is required, so check out the town website and you can register for that. The zoning bylaw review signage subcommittee is happening on Thursday, October 10th, at 9:30 a.m. via Zoom. And then, we will be closed on Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day on October 14th. So, town offices will be closed on that day.
Thank you. Any other members have any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Ms. LaRue, hold on. Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to announce that the Sculpture Park will be hosting the Third Annual Pumpkin Painting Party on Saturday, October 19th, beginning at noon. Everything's free, free pumpkins, free paints, free donuts, please come.
Thank you. Mr. Cavino?
Just one quick one, Mr. Chairman, and that is just to say thank you to Leahy Clinic for coming through and giving seniors over 60 years old who have appointments at 4103 Mall Road, free parking.
Thank you.
As letter shows in the letters distributing it.
Yes.
Can we get that up maybe on our website?
We're going to talk about all of that later on, Ernie. You're ahead of the game.
So, the background of this, Leahy had come before us for some parking adjustments on Mall Road. And as a condition of that, they agreed that they were going to improve the process. We are, they already do. They already were providing vouchers, but the process was a bit broken, so we work with them. And again, thanks to Leahy for coming up with a process that looks pretty robust and repeatable and reliable. So, thank you, Ernie, for bringing that to our attention.
Didn't mean to get out of order, Mr. Cavino.
No, 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 of course not. We'll, no, it's, I think we're going to end up to be very helpful. All right, if I may, item A, discussion, Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning District, Melissa Tinkopolis, the Economic Development Director, please.
Thank you, Planning Board. For the record, my name is Melissa Tinkopolis with the Economic Development Office. Just wanted to come to the board today as this item for discussion and allow, kind of invite the public to know that the Planning Board has been talking about the mixed-use rezoning initiative for some time now and wanted to provide an update, given some of the changes that have taken place mainly around the boundary and the geography. So, oh, I'm moving my own slide, so I'll just move to the next slide, Liz. And just for some context, and those of you who might be tuning in who are not as familiar, the town has undergone, you know, an analysis of our largest commercial district along Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike. We worked with Mass Development and looked at kind of the long-term future, the sustainability of this corridor, to really see how this economic engine will maintain itself, not only in value, but in terms of a sense of place. And there, you know, identify, we identified over 100 acres of development opportunity, most of its parking lots. So, the idea was to start looking at how we can change the zoning to consolidate the parking and allow for infill, which would maintain the existing commercial, but start to allow new buildings throughout this district that would create some synergies and add value over time. So, in the next slide, Liz. So, the overall district initially that was looked at was about 500 acres and it roughly kind of looks at this orange boundary. So, and it had several districts from, you know, the Blanchard Road down to south of the bottom of this slide, to the right, Wayside, Burlington Woods, Leahy, the district in the mall, as well as across where the Keurig Building is. So, moving to the next slide. The initial boundary for the zoning district had included pretty much all of this area, so the light pink and the dark pink. And the dark pink was looked at as an area that we really wanted to kind of focus on. There's the amenities that exist, wanted to leverage that and consider putting in some housing options, more commercial opportunities in the dark pink areas. And with that, there's some concern, moving forward, even though the whole area has been analyzed and we thought maybe for town meeting to consider the whole commercial district, the 500 acres, might be a little too much. So, I think the idea was through the Planning Board and through the process with discussions with you guys, of course, as well as ZBRC and the Land Use Committee, as well as the property owners and Advisory Committee. The idea was to prune back the geography. So, if we kind of go to the next one and focus a little bit more on the area that, in one hand, is already kind of zoned, the PDD, the district and the section to the right, and then the left, which is kind of the mall and across the street from the mall on Mall Road, and really focus in on this area. So, here, if you go to the next slide, the updated geography and proposal to town meeting would come in two phases. The first phase would be this hot pink section. Now, the context of what we've discussed in terms of what's allowed and the building density has not changed. It's really just a prune-back version here in the hot pink. The orange is actually our MBTA community zoning. We didn't put all the zoning up there, so we might, like, this map might be revised a little bit more so. But I wanted to just to share those two things. And to remind, you know, the Planning Board knows this quite well in terms of, you know, the success of mixed-use districts over time. We have our own success story and I thought maybe we could kind of just remind people, why we're doing this. If we go to the next slide really quickly. You know, it's our Third Avenue. It was a PDD at the time. And it works for a PDD because there was one property owner. Here in the Mall Road District, multiple property owners, hence the community-driven initiative to put forward more of what we want and more of the public realm. And I just, I will hand this out, this is, I think I gave this to you last time, but it was, it's something that I want to bring to Ways and Means again, and it's just to show the value of this PDD over time. And so, you can see in 2005 and then in 2024, the value has really increased over time, attributed mostly to the variety of opportunity that exists in this kind of, you know, walkable area. So, we're trying to replicate some of the success that the town has had, that, you know, Norblum in partnership with, you know, working with the Planning Board and Town Meeting has seen. So, if you go to the next slide, I think I wanted to share some, you know, kind of next steps that you guys could anticipate for this. I'd like to come back to your next meeting with our consultant, so you can ask any questions specifically. And that's on the 1017. Town Council has started to review the zoning and has provided comments. And so, we're incorporating those, so I will bring updated, any comments that she had and incorporate those, so you'll have an updated zoning draft. And then, we want to submit the warrant article and put that in for the January town meeting. So, they will, we will need to put that in at the end of October. And then, the public hearings through the Planning Board will take place. We'd like to hold some additional precinct meetings. And then, we would aim for the January town meeting for, town meeting to can really consider this new district. And I think that might be, yeah, that was just kind of a back pocket one for me, a little, a little, some visual cues for me in terms of reminding us kind of what we have in terms of the benefit for moving in this direction. I have, yeah, I have one more thing. I'd like to kind of give an update to, if I may. Sure? So, in addition to the zoning regs, our consultants have developed what we have kind of the design standards and guidelines for the buildings that would go in this district. So, it is essentially a handbook for the Planning Board, for you as members today and for members in the future, to say, this is the kind of building that we'd like to see in this area. This is a kind of public realm, you know, activation we'd like to see. This is the areas, how we want to incorporate more value as we build this. And, you know, this, this part is important for, a little for consistencies, but also to kind of telegraph or amplify our message to developers and property owners that our goal is to really see this as, you know, a connected mixed-use community, not just one-off developments, so that we would move away from, you know, projects that are infill, and I've mentioned this before, like the Citizens Bank in Coles, that is an infill project, but it doesn't give us a lot of value. Even, you know, the Crate and Barrel, it's an infill project, but doesn't give us a lot of value. So, we could continue with the ad hoc or with the mixed-use district. We're trying to insert here the different types of buildings you can build. The cap, I know this comes up several times, the cap on the height is to five to six stories, no matter, you know, if you look at the different types, you probably would not see anything more than that. So, you can go back into the regs and see that in the zoning bylaw. And the uses combine a little of what is in the BG, in the Innovation District, and it allows for the housing piece. So, that altogether, we feel strongly they'll add a lot of value and will help sustain this district into the future. But this handbook, I encourage handing out hard copies to the board for you to take a look, mark up, and tell me what you think, because this is something that doesn't need to be approved by town meeting. This can be adopted by the Planning Board and it can just be a tool to help, you know, communicate what the Planning Board would like to see from the development community going forward.
Great.
So.
Thank you. Staff, comments?
Nothing really beyond that. I, you know, I just want to, you know, remind everybody that while it seems like a lot, this is, you know, a 30-year-plus plan. This is not going to happen tomorrow. And so, you know, it's, we're trying to set the district up for success for the future and kind of bring it into the post-COVID world and make sure that, you know, we're successful and that we have a great tax base for the next generation of Burlington residents.
Thank you, staff. We'll start over to the left, Ms. Nataula, any comments?
Yes. Melissa, I wanted to ask, when you said, like, getting away from, let's say, the fill area, so are you saying, let's say, we went to fill it in with, like, buildings that have, let's say, housing on top and then, like, commercial property on the bottom, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, so that would be allowed. The idea is in the new zoning, it has a variety of, it invites, it affords flexibility, let's say that. So, that would be a building type that would be allowed. And that's kind of why it's important for, like, how it's facing, how it's interacting with, you know, the other buildings and the other parcels is important. And that's what the regulating plan in the zoning does.
Great. Great. Mr. Pembaba.
I don't have any questions. I thought just to learn more about it, I guess. Sounds, in theory, sounds good. Till we know more about it, I don't know whether we'll comment on it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sutherland.
You had mentioned town council's currently reviewing it. Do you think before next meeting, we would be able to get, like, a summary of comments ahead of time, just so then there might be some that we don't have to comment on?
Yes. So what we think that is possible by probably early next week, I can give the summary of the comments and then we can incorporate the things that were obviously fixes that we needed to address.
Awesome. I know this has been a long project, a lot of meetings and information sessions about it, so I'm excited to get over the finish line with this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a lot of questions. We have been doing this for a long time. I just wanted to clarify for people listening that the zoning part has to go to town meeting and needs a two-thirds. It's more the design review part that you're saying town meeting does not need to approve, correct?
Correct.
Do you intend to present that to town meeting?
The design standards and guidelines? So some of that is in the zoning. So some of it will reference that, for example, if you are moving forward on a mixed use, it should, you know, be sighted in a certain way, should have a certain interaction, require a certain amount of open space. That is in the zoning. If you want a little bit more detailed examples, that is in your guidelines here.
Thank you. My feeling about this is that this belongs with town meeting. I think it's, it's, it's a big change. It's exciting. It's scary and all of those things. And I think it really does belong with, it's a decision that town meeting should be making because it does affect the whole town dramatically. But I think you, I appreciate the work that you've done on it. It's incredibly detailed and you've worked really hard on it and it's very, very well done. So I compliment you on that and I'm very interested to see what town meeting does.
Mr. Cavino.
I'm not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. The only comment I always have is, I know that you scaled that back and that was feedback that you got from, from the board. And I think you'll have greater success with town meeting with the scaled, scaled-back version. I think just in general, though, as we talk about mixed use, you know, and that the housing shortages that we have in Massachusetts and that folks, particularly the younger side, are going elsewhere because of that, you know, we do have to certainly look at it very seriously on a number of different fronts. So, so thank you very much.
If I, I just, I do want to, though, discuss the, like, designing, presenting design at town meeting real quick because, I mean, in theory, that, I mean, that's what our board is for, though, for us to make the decisions on design.
Perhaps I didn't, wasn't clear. I think, I don't necessarily think the design has, part has to go to town meeting. I was curious to know whether or not that would be presented at town meeting because actually I'm concerned that that could become too confusing and could weigh the whole thing down. I think it might be better not to present that at town meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think the zoning part is where that belongs with town meeting. It's a huge decision. And I think it might become too unwieldy if both of these things were presented at town meeting.
I misunderstood.
But it is zoning with, with design review authority. Is that correct?
Yes, but the design review authority is with us.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay.
So this, I guess that, when I provide you is a draft of the design guidelines is for the mixed-use district and it'll be referenced in the zoning, but I wasn't planning to go through that document at town meeting, right? And that seems like to make sense.
Yeah, you may get a lot of questions about it, but I think it would be, it's going to be too difficult to go through that with town meeting. It's too much.
Yeah, I agree. I think what we've tried to do was try to explain the different building types because in most cases, the height and the type of building has been what people most care about and how it interacts with the public realm. And so I think that's, you know, where we've had success so far is talking also to the property owners and sharing that the zoning and what our vision is for this district. It resonates with them, although they won't always agree with everything because it does elevate some of the design and expectations on, on them. So I think I just want to be very transparent about that because as much as we've been in collaboration, part of threading the needle is to balance, you know, the community and the public benefits from zoning and adding more capacity for them. And then, you know, the private sector, you know, benefits from, you know, allowing more development here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pembaba.
Yeah, so I guess one question I have was, is there precedent somewhere that we'd be able to visually see it in place somewhere?
I would say, so the case study before you is the PDD. So the PDD works a lot like the mixed-use district, but that was one owner.
Yeah, I know. Like you said, I mean, that's a single owner. You gotta, you gotta, you know, this is a different scenario. But I guess what I'm saying is, is there any community around that, that you've, you know, modeled it after, that we have something that we can look at?
Yes. There's, yeah, I could send several case studies that are more just, I would say, mixed-use districts with multiple property owners we could look at.
Yeah, that, that have been in place for a while, so we can actually see how they've evolved.
Is that would be around Natick and Framingham, there's some of that activity?
Mm-hmm. I think so. I have to look at some of them, you know, when you kind of go down beneath the surface, sometimes you find it's only one property owner, so they have a little bit more control. But we can look at some of the mixed-use areas that I know even Bedford and Littleton has done that, maybe on a smaller scale with some of their town centers or, you know, downtowns. Main Streets have done that, so you'll see some of that. You know, we are, you know, we're actually, that's why I think it's so important to lay the groundwork, because in a lot of ways, you know, our mall is very successful and that's not going away. In some communities, if it's, you don't have a successful mall, it'd almost be easier because you can remove the mall, demolish the mall, and you're kind of starting from scratch. Here, our mall is quite successful and we've been working with the property owners, also the, you know, ownership from Macy's, even the district next door, how we can connect that and make it work together over time. So it's a little bit more unique for us, but I can definitely find examples that can show what's possible.
Harvey Wubin's another example of that, right downtown in their malls, where it was not successful and they had the housing to it.
In the mall, not the downtown?
No, in the mall. I'm saying you have the housing, but it, you can't argue that it's activated and it's very popular and it's, you go there, it's, it's a happening place every, every time I go.
Was Westwood, isn't there something in Westwood?
Oh, Westwood Station. There's some transit-oriented development ones. I'm trying to think of some other ones that have introduced housing in a successful way.
I mean, like I said, you'd probably point to a million of them, the single owners, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm just trying to picture one that falls into this exact scenario and see how it's evolved and see if it's worked, see what, you know.
And I think that was just like, maybe to reiterate what Liz said about the timeline. So, you know, we're looking at timeline and we can gauge through this process, you know, we are setting the table for future development and we've been able to talk to property owners directly through this. And we understand there's some developer interest, you know, kind of on maybe a parcel around the Macy's area. And I guess what I'm saying with that is that it, it is a process over time and that's why I think I wanted to share that PDD case study with you, because that's from 2005 to 2024. And that's 20, you know, 20 years roughly, and it's still only partially built out. But the yield on the, the value over time is over 130%. You can read that there. So in terms of the tax, taxes that we also bring in, when the value increases, obviously we bring in more taxes. So that same lot, if we had not done anything, today would bring in about $3 million, that PDD alone. But based on the changes and then the value that's enhanced with more occupancy and more interest has now generated much more. And now we generate about $6.3 million in taxes, you know, tax revenue just from that northwest part, Third Ave, PDD.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to get, I mean, we're getting, we have skeptics that, you know, that come for us all the time about the center of town, you know, it's, you know, it's a failure, it didn't work. No, we have, you don't have control over that. That's why I'm saying, it's a timeline. You can't put a timeline on it. It's just something that you need to put into place that just, you know, just moves things forward in the right direction. And if it never goes into place, when things move forward, they don't necessarily go in the right direction. So you, but I'm just, I'm, you know, again, probably more the reason why I'd like to see something that had been, you know, in place for a long period of time, to see how it's evolving, you know, because in theory it's great. It's just that, you know, you're always going to get people say, that was not, not good for the town, it's this and that, because they don't really understand it or because it didn't happen yesterday.
Yeah. Yeah, the variables are more challenging for us because you have, you know, for us, meaning a community, any municipality. You have, you know, ownership, you have real estate cycles, and then you have, you know, the zoning. And I think what will be, the effort really is to, you know, create zoning that's flexible so that it enhances, you know, the developer, the owners, the owner reps, you know, opportunity to move when the real estate cycle is more successful. Right now, we know that high demand, one, you know, one thing's kind of a slam dunk would be the housing. We know there's extreme strong demand for that. And as, you know, we've talked about, we want to really contain that a bit for our commercial district, because we really want to maintain the commercial component of this. We are strategically introducing and allowing for some of that demand to be, you know, in kind of injected for the vitality and the strength of the commercial. But, you know, if you just opened it up entirely, then that would, you know, it would change into.
It's a balancing.
Yeah, a balancing act. So that, that's what this zoning has tried to do.
Incentivize what you want to happen and that's, you know, and you can't force it to happen. You can only incentivize what you want to happen.
Exactly.
And hopefully over time it works.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
Next mayor's appointment, we have item A, which is a public hearing, application for approval of site plan 67 South Bedford Street. Beth Israel Leahy Health is the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein here tonight representing Leahy Health and Medical Center in connection with the application for 67 South Bedford Street. Tim Williams, civil engineer with Allen &amp; Major, who submitted the, the plans, and also John Navarro, who is with Leahy Health. So we're here in connection with the property at 67 South Bedford Street, which I know the board has some familiarity with. But the proposal that's before you tonight and the subject of this application is a site plan application that would really fall, I think, all of the modifications here, which we're talking about under the orbit of kind of handicap accessibility type of improvements to the building and the exterior of the building and the parking field and the sidewalk. So on the, this is the side of the building that is facing 128. There's a couple of existing entrances that they have at the east and the west entrance, where today the, the entrances have a revolving door type entrance at both of those. And from an accessibility perspective, in terms of the utilization of the building, it's been determined that that's not optimal in terms of the handicap elderly patrons coming in and out. So what they're proposing is two very modestly sized entry vestibules, one at both the east and the west entrance. I say small, it's about 160 square feet each, that would eliminate that revolving door feature and provide a more conventional vestibule entrance that would allow people kind of protection from the elements and whatnot. So as part of that, they're also proposing some exterior sidewalk improvements as well, which Tim Williams, I think, could explain in further detail if you'd like, that just really for mobility enhancement. And that also allows us to add a little bit more green space to the site, not about 500 square feet more of, of green space by eliminating some pavement there. And then the third component is really the handicap parking that is being provided in the, the main parking field itself that is shown on the plan, that allows us to comply with the Architectural Access Board requirements for, for handicap accessibility parking. So, Tim, did you want to maybe elaborate on?
Sure. For the record, Tim Williams with Allen &amp; Major Associates. So 67 South Bedford has the east entrance and the west entrance. The east entrance has a handicapped accessible ramp that kind of spans about 30 feet across the approach to the, the new vestibule, and it's brick pavers. The idea is to eliminate those brick pavers on the east side and on the west side, eliminate the brick pavers and mimic the handicapped ramp that's on the east side on the west side, so there's synergy between the two. And then as far as the handicap parking goes, per the ADA, MAB regulations, for medical outpatient, you need to have 10% of your required parking needs to be handicapped accessible. So there's about 87,000 square feet of medical outpatient that's either existing or going to be proposed for 67 South Bedford, which requires 436 total parking spots. Of that, 10% need to be handicapped accessible, so we need upwards of 50 handicap spaces. So the idea is to restripe the parking lot in front of the, the two entrances to be handicapped accessible. I understand it's excessive, we'll be putting new signage in, handicap striping, the accessible signage that's required. And then what we propose to do is just stripe the whole approach between those handicap spaces and the, and the two entrances and stripe that as an accessible route. So again, it'll, it'll, it all meets the ADA requirements and we're just bringing the site into conformance. So right now, based on the existing and the proposed uses for the site, minimum spaces required is 587. The total maximum spaces is 620. So we're proposing, actually restriping the parking lot allows for 624 spaces, which is a little bit more than what's required by the max, but currently out there today, there's 654 parking spaces.
So we're bringing it more into conformance with the bylaw, so.
And then as well, Mark had mentioned, portions of the, those brick pavers that are being removed are going to be converted to landscaped area. So that brings down our, we're actually creating more pervious surface out there than exists today, so that's a net benefit to the site.
Perfect. Thank you. Let me start with Steph. Comments?
So I don't have any major comments. The only thing is that, and I know you guys mentioned it, there are some Section 6 findings, so that's our pre-existing non-conforming uses and premises section of our bylaw. So like the proponent mentioned, they are pre-existing non-conforming with regards to parking, they're overparked, they are reducing their parking to become more in compliance with, with the, with the parking maximum. They are, again, reducing the pervious surface, so they're reducing the impervious surface, so they're bringing that more into compliance. They're not currently in compliance with that. And they are increasing, because they are adding these new vestibules, it's like 300 square feet of new space, they are increasing the floor area ratio, which is, you know, this is an older building, it's not compliant with that either, but the finding is basically that we're increasing the handicap accessibility by a lot, so it's not more detrimental than the existing non-conformities. So that's.
Thank you, Steph. I'll start over with Vice Chair Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited to see some more greenery. I think while you all are kind of redoing that space, just some food for thought, I was, I was looking through, seeing if I could see it, but I couldn't. Perhaps like a bench near the entrances, the vestibules, just for, you know, folks dropping off their loved ones, parking the car, if they may. I think if there's a little bit of respite near the vestibules, it might be nice and give it a nice little welcoming feel. But excited about all the handicap spaces, definitely necessary. And also noticed that the trees were replanted out front, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pembaba.
No, I, I have no comments. I'm always, always good when you become more compliant.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for the gesture, the senior parking that you gave us.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Natale.
Yep. Same. I don't have too many questions. It looks
Yep. Same. I don't have too many questions. It looks really good and I'm really pleased to see everything you did. It looks really, really nice. I think it's a great addition.
Great. Thank you. I'll swing it over to Mr. Cavino.
No, no question.
Ms. Larue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions in general. I'm in favor of it. I like Jess's idea of having a bench. So when you drop off your loved one and you go park the car, they have somewhere to sit until you get there to help them in. That's a great idea. Couple of questions. When you do the re-striping, are you going to have a certain percentage of the paces, spaces be for compact cars or will they all be standard size?
We're, we're not proposing any compact spaces.
Great, because the cars are not compact. So thank you. Are you considering installing any EV spaces?
Not at this time.
Okay. Okay. Those are just my, my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you. My comments would be that I, we appreciate the, the added handicap spaces there for compliance. Personal experience with a handicap tag was, was a challenge to find a handicap spot. And we'd have to bring my 90-year-old mother in from, you know, 25 rows down and then get it through the revolving door. So you can imagine that that in itself was a task. So it's real, I think is, is a, is a great model to far the outpatient activity that you have there. And I forget, I thought you were, was adding another function there versus the primary care?
From what I understand, they're adding another outpatient department is moving in there. Yeah.
The physical therapy one on the left, you've got the, right, the...
Dermatology, General and Internal Medicine. We have, we have a number of clinics that we've been moving into this space over time.
Oh, yes, is increasing there. So a successful site for sure. That's the only comments I had. Do I have a motion? Oh, excuse me, I have to open this up to the public. Thank you.
Before you open the public, I was just going to also add that it was all standard comments.
Standard comments for any site plan. Anybody that would like to speak in favor or against this particular petition?
I don't see anyone online.
Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We've got a 6-0-0. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of the Leahy Clinic Foundation, Inc., applicant for approval of a site plan for property located at 67 South Bedford Street premises to allow for enhanced accessibility through the modification of existing vestibules, modifications to the existing entrance areas, additional handicap parking spaces, and additional site enhancements as reflected on the redlined site plan set entitled Beth Israel Leahy Health, 67 South Bedford Vestibule and Multi-Specialty Outpatient prepared by Allen &amp; Major Associates, Inc., dated March 13, 2024, consisting of six sheets, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second? Thank you. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Liz, thank you for all the time reviewing and your assistance along the way here. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay. And again, thank you for the improved process for the senior parking. That's going to be very helpful as well. Let's go to item B. It's a continued public hearing amendment to Article 3 districts, Article 4 use regulations, and Article 10 miscellaneous and special regulations in zoning by law allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in a new marijuana retail zoning overlay district submitted by Alex Rutherford, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, on behalf of Will Seagard. Yes, hi.
Hello. How's everybody?
Good, good.
Will Seagard, Precinct 7. Alex couldn't make it tonight. He just had a baby on Monday. So...
Okay, congratulations.
Obviously, that took precedence, but he did say he was going to try and call in, but I don't know if that's possible.
That's understood.
So I don't have too many updates as far as the proposal. We are planning to hopefully put it forward for the January town meeting. I think I really wanted to just keep moving the discussion forward. We had spoken, I believe, somebody on this board, and then the select board, and then some of the other committees had discussed forming a subcommittee of some kind to dive a little bit deeper and not take up a ton of time at these meetings doing that because there's just volumes and volumes of information. So just wanted to see how do we make that happen and what's the best way to just keep moving this forward? So...
Great, thank you. So just to clarify, you live in Precinct 7?
Correct. Yep.
Great, thank you. Staff?
Sure. So I'm just a little bit update. So we just concluded September town meeting on Monday. So we're getting going already for January, which is good. So the status of the, they, so what I'm calling the exploratory committee on the legalization of marijuana, which is kind of the subcommittee, what I would like to do first to set the stage and to make sure that we internally as staff of all the different departments that this will affect are on the same page and kind of have the same ideas. And so that we, we're kind of going at this with kind of a united front. Wanted to schedule to have a, just kind of an internal meeting with staff first to, you know, have everybody understand what's going on and their thoughts and feelings. And then from there, and I have proposed that for next week internally, and from there, then kind of set up a meeting for the, the greater elected official subcommittee, which would probably take this another later on in October. So we want to get, make sure that, you know, staff has all of our ducks in a row before we invite everybody to, you know, the subcommittee meeting. And, you know, the, the subcommittee meeting, the subcommittee, kind of their role that kind of I think we talked about earlier on in this process was, you know, answer kind of two questions. Does the legalization of recreational marijuana provide sufficient benefit to the town outweighing costs, both direct and indirect? You know, is this something that, that is, is a, is a, is a full benefit to the town? And then two, is this something that Burlington voters believe should be pursued by staff? And if, so if, if yes on one, and if yes on two, the next, the last question would be, how do we measure that? And then how do we, you know, from there, kind of goes forward?
Okay, great. Planning board members, any comments? We'll go start over here with Ms. Natola again.
No, I'm just looking forward to learning more about it. I don't know a lot about it and interested in seeing the benefits, you know.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Membah.
No, no comment this time.
Vice Chair Sutherland.
Question for staff. To hit January town meeting, items have to be submitted end of October, correct?
Yes. So the deadline for January town meeting is October 29.
Okay.
I don't expect, so this, the subcommittee, I don't expect will have legislation ready for January town. That's not, that's not the expectation.
Yeah. So I just, I do want to like maintain that expectation that I think January town meeting is highly unlikely unless some miracle struck down on all of us. But to that avail, I think we all also agree. Obviously, we want the conversation moving. Staff indicated they'll, you know, meet hopefully within the coming week or two. From there, then subcommittee will meet. I think it's been discussed that subcommittee is certainly eager to take advantage of so many people going to the polls in early November to then be able to hopefully get a sense from the community, whether it's just having conversations outside where legally allowed. So there is eagerness to continue this. But I think with that, also just wanting to outline some pretty solid expectations of, with the subcommittee, you know, making sure that you are there as a participant.
Yep.
You know, it's, staff won't be writing the zoning, so there will be a lot of information needed to be brought forward. And I think I am hoping to see if, if we want to progress this forward, there needs to be a lot more information brought in front of us. You know, I think the expectation of the board to do a lot of heavy lifting, I think we've already outlined, would, would not be at that time right now. There obviously will be a lot of information the subcommittee will be gathering. But I would just say that would want to see a lot more of the, the cost benefit. Will probably take some time. So I just want you to rest assured. We're eager to get this moving, but I think there also needs to be some realistic expectations of the amount of information that is also provided to us.
Yeah, and I'm happy to provide that in any setting. I, I already have a 35-page-plus presentation I could show you, but I don't think everybody wants to spend the whole night on that.
No, that's probably for the subcommittee.
And so that's sort of why I'm just learning how best to provide that information, when to provide it, and not waste everybody's time or, yeah, so...
Perfect.
Yeah. No, I think you're right. They'll probably be best served for the subcommittee, but...
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Larue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't get past question number two. Is this something Burlington voters believe should be pursued by staff and by their elected officials? And I don't know how to proceed until we know the answer to that question. This was a question that was asked of the, of the, of the Burlington voters during a very well-attended election. It was a presidential election, so we had the most voters we ever get coming to the polls and answering this question. And they were pretty definitive. I understand that was seven years ago about, but we can't presume that they changed their minds. We need to ask them if they changed their minds. So that's where I'm kind of stuck right now. So I think it's fine for us to form a subcommittee and talk through some of these things, but I don't think it would be wise for us to invest too much of staff's time until we can answer that question.
And what do you think? Another, another vote? But we're too late for the presidential?
I, that's the problem. Because if we do a vote in April, we don't get very many people.
Well, that's why I think if the subcommittee can meet before the election, and then it's simply having a tent outside where you have an iPad, where it's like, it's not an official vote, but it's gathering a survey, a qualitative survey of a general consensus, at least will give you general directional feeling for where...
Yeah.
Because I mean, this is, there are a lot of people going to be turning out to vote this.
Oh, yes. I agree completely. Yes. So I, I like that idea, Jess. And we'll have to be really careful, and we can do comparisons afterwards about what we're trying to do that we actually heard from.
Is a government body, and is that outside of a, you know, you're looking for...
And how do you do it in a manner that is unbiased?
Unbiased and legal, right?
Correct.
In the election. So we've got challenges ahead in, in a very short period of time.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Cavino.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the moderator would allow it, but that might be a place for a town meeting resolution, too.
That's a great idea.
I don't know, because those people are supposed to be representing a very small portion of the...
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, I like the idea of, of holding the voters on November 5th, but remember that now we have a lot of people who vote early and vote.
It's already happening.
Often. No vote.
Right.
But yes, I, I think our members have covered it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a public meeting, is there anyone out there that'd like to speak for or against this? Yes, please. Please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Larue. Jack Kelly, Precinct 7, Town Meeting Member. And Precinct 7 is where the proposed overlay is, so I have pretty much interest. I guess my question is... Pull it away.
Close, Sarah. It's hard to hear you.
Good.
I'm sorry. It's not usually my problem. The, the question I have is, if there's a committee being formed, who should want to be on that? How is it being designed? And if town meeting members are eligible, I'll put my bid in.
So at this time, it is, I mean, it's really an exploratory committee at this point. It's very early stages, and it's two members of the planning board, two members of the select board. There are two members of Ways and Means. And then there are going to be two members of the Board of Health, because those are kind of the three areas where in my research and what other towns have for their bylaws, they're, you know, it involves, again, Board of Health, Select Board, because it's in the general bylaw, right?
Licensing.
And then the, the zoning bylaw. And then, you know, I think Ways and Means, it's kind of, you know, that financial analysis of it. You know, I feel like when we talk about cost benefits, it's not just financial that we're talking about, but it's, you know, it's, that is, that is kind of the makeup. I also worry that if it gets too big, that it gets...
So the committee is already formed?
It is, it is...
It is designed?
It is designed. That, yes.
But it's not filled and formed? Okay.
Yes, member Kelly, yes.
All right. Yep. I know there were a member, a couple of members of Toming that did want to be on there.
Yes, yes, yes. And they're, and honestly, they are all going to be public meetings. They will be publicly posted, and they are, you know, available. I'm sure they'll be available, you know, online. And so, you know, we are planning on having a very transparent process through the whole thing. Yep.
I would echo what I've heard. There's an awful lot of information which has not yet been put out, which is needed before any type of a decision can be made on this. And I'm looking forward to seeing it all.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, is anyone else out there? I don't see anybody. May have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Plan Board meeting of October 17, 2024.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One question.
Are we going to have anything changed between now and the 17, and, and the 17? Are we even going to have a meeting?
So this is actually something I was thinking while I was writing the staff report. So I mean, I think that we will definitely have, you know, the internal staff meeting. But I, you know, it might be before the, before the first subcommittee meeting, but I can't be sure. It's, it's hard to get that many people to coalesce.
Well, we can always, we can continue it now. We can always change it.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
So we had, we had a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 6-0-0. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 7C and 7D together for discussion purposes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 6-0-0. Thank you. Motion is for item C is a public hearing application for approval of special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.10, Restaurant, Fast Food, Order and Takeout of the Zoning Bylaws 271 Cambridge Street, Arch, Ark Projects Company, LLC is the applicant. And item 7D is a public hearing and application for approval of a site plan 270, a site plan for 271 Cambridge Street, Our Projects and Company is the LLC is the applicant. Hello?
Hello.
Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, the board, for the opportunity of this public hearing. My name is Raquel. I am with Our Projects and Company. We are a design.
Raquel, do you have a last name?
Basconcelos.
Okay.
We are a design originally company with a dream to bring coffee station, coffee shop together with design. We found a lovely place in Burlington and started to work with brews for that. I just want to read a briefly concept of our coffee shop and go over what we are proposing for. So brewed in Burlington, it's a unique coffee station service that combines specialty coffees style with an immersive interior design experience. Our mission is to provide a welcoming atmosphere where customers can pause, relax, and indulge in their favorite brews while surrounded by inspiring art and design. So that's a combination that I think can be very enjoyable. And we are proposing 21 seats as a max of what the space could support, maybe. Very flexible there for what could be done instead. If it's 21, it's not ideal with the space. We just think that people couldn't do it. Some people couldn't do a pause, but some people couldn't be fast on just taking a coffee and going to their work or whatever they have on the daily routines. And that's basically that for the initial concept of the, the proposal.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steph?
So I am doing double duty tonight, doing both visuals and...
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
And kind of helping you guys out. So this is just kind of a, we're just kind of opening this. I don't expect a vote tonight. So this is a, a proposal for a coffee shop at 271 Cambridge Street. It is where the Spencer's Cleaners used to be. So in the plaza, you have a touch of Midas Jewelers, you have House of Style Salon, and you have Burlington Jade. And so they are all 800 square feet. It is a site that is, you know, has been around for a long time. It has 17 spaces. And so we are kind of just starting out with the design process. This is in the town center...
This is in the town center overlays, you guys know. So, while we're doing a site plan, because the site was built when, Mr. Travers?
Hi, folks, my name is Bruce Travers. I'm representing the ownership of it. My widowed elderly 88-year-old mom owns the building. My father constructed that building in 1977.
So, so, we are kind of, we're just beginning, so, I have a couple of questions for Raquel. So, how many seats are you proposing to have in, in the café?
Right now, we're proposing 21 as a max. The reason for the 21, it's because we want to have three couches, and that can count, it's one big, but it could account for three seats, plus three tables as well, and the bar on the coffee station would have another three stools. And then, when you list in like 21, it looks like so much, but if actually you have three couches with three tables and three seats, as the stools on the, on the counter for the coffee station, isn't that much? But, again, I'm very flexible on hearing what's possible and not possible to do, and making adaptations, and doing whatever it's necessary to accomplish something that's reasonable for everybody. As I understand, we have another three stores, and I want to make sure it is reasonable for what the space.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not right now, I'm, come back to me?
Sure, absolutely, yeah. And just, I'll start, just real quick, I think with 17 spaces, 21 seats, and because with other plazas, you have, and I was in one today, yesterday, I forget, where there's a lot of like lunch places, and it just gets packed of lunch here, you've got, right, a Chinese food restaurant more late, you know, a jeweler and a salon.
Jeweler's just trickles, just not, never a big volume going on.
So, I think, you know, with the 17 spaces and the mix that you have there, I think that's exactly what we look for in a plaza like that. So, let me bring it to the other board members, I'll start on this side then with Ms. LaRue.
Thank you. Question for staff. According to our bylaw, what is the parking requirement for a restaurant that has 21 seats?
So, that is.
That's a great question.
So, that is what is, that is max, that's, so.
What is it? What's the number?
So, I would not have had this come before you if it didn't meet the parking requirements that exist on the site. So, so, the other spaces, the other three spaces, Burlington Jade has no seats.
Right.
The other two, you know, are about four spaces per thousand.
Yeah.
And they're, and so, the, it's 2,400 square feet between the three other spaces, so that's nine spaces.
For those three?
For those three, and then you have a total of 17 spaces, so, it, the 21 seats does, that would be the maximum, that would exactly equal the maximum, the minimum parking.
So, minimum parking for 21 seats is eight spaces? Really?
Because it's three.
It's three per space.
It's three, it's three, it's one space for every three seats.
Okay, so, I love this concept. I love the idea of an artistic space where people have coffee, and it sounds wonderful. I'm worried about the location, specifically because of the parking. That's, that's my only concern, is parking. So, I need to learn more about this, I need to see if maybe there's some way we can come up with a parking agreement with a neighboring property, or something like that, because although you're telling me there's enough parking there, I've been in that plaza, and I've been in that plaza when there isn't a coffee shop that is exciting and popular and new, and it's still hard to get in and out of there. It's very tight, and there are very few spaces, and I have actually gone there at times to go to Touch of Midas, and had to turn around and leave because there was no place to park. So, I am concerned about it. That's my only concern, though, it sounds like a wonderful idea.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Mr. Cavino.
Can you tell me, do you expect most of your clientele in the morning, the evening, or when?
I expect in the morning, I would say. We might have hours of operations changing for more time in the morning than afternoon, so probably in the morning.
What would the hours?
And I echo with my fellow member Barbara LaRue said, having used that plaza quite a bit, it's, it's a challenging location, not just for parking, but actually for in and out of that location. I would think that if the majority of your clients were in the morning, then at least they'd be going, probably be going south rather than north, so they wouldn't have to, they'd make a right in, right out.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a plus in this case.
Hopefully.
I don't know, I'd be willing to try and see if we could work it out, but to you yourself also, and just for your business, if people can't get in and out, they're not gonna frequent the business, and if they don't, then maybe you might have chosen the wrong location, not to deny Mr. Travers a tenant, obviously, but.
Well, it's reassuring hearing how frequent you visit my family's plot, thank you.
Say that again?
It's encouraging to hear how frequent some of the board members visit that, that address, 271, thank you.
Oh, yes, yes, I think a lot of us do, who lived in that neighborhood or live in that neighborhood, and who may have, before Spencer went out, may have frequented dry cleaners in Burlington Jade and in Touch of Midas, actually. So, I, I think quite a few of us are familiar with it, and that's why you might, you might hear some reservations, not because we don't like the concept, the concept is great for the town center, this is what we're working for.
Thank you, Mr. Cavino. I'll swing it over to Ms. Natola.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to ask you, is there gonna be a lot of takeout? Because I think that would help with the parking, because the Burlington Jade has a big takeout business, and it doesn't appear to be a huge problem because of the takeout area. So, if this was gonna be like a takeout, I think maybe they could do something with the parking, just for 15-minute parking, or something to that idea, if you're gonna come in to get your coffee and go, for some of it.
Yes, I totally agree that the takeout could work well, especially with what we're offering in our menu. If the board asks for less seats versus having more stimulus on their takeout, that's something that can definitely work. The only thing that I am concerned is not having any seat, because definitely could be not attractive.
I think you should have seats, I'm just saying, so that you are able to have a great business, too. I think it would be a good takeout area, because that's how the Jade continued for so many years, they have a good takeout business. So, I don't know if that helps with that whole situation there, if everyone finds it to be confining. I know you could always get in, get your stuff and go, it's not like the people are sticking around those parking spots for a long period of time. So, that might be an option.
Thank you, Mr. Mpemba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My thoughts, my initial thoughts were exactly what your thoughts were, which is, you know, the spot's gonna be filled with something, so we need to find something that's gonna be compatible with the other users in there. And I know, you know, for a fact that, you know, Touch of Midas, I've been in there many times, and very few, you're, you're maybe lucky if you have two people in at any given time, so, you know, and the times are typically not early morning that people go in there. I know Jade, I don't think they even open until afternoon, you know, so lunchtime or whatever it is, so, the busy time in this type of a business, and, and, and we're looking at a much cleaner user than was in there before, but when you look at the, when you look at the business that was in there before, it was probably the traffic, the traffic, it was the same kind of traffic, it was morning traffic, in and out, in and out in the morning, right? And it was never really an issue for them, because, you know, there couldn't be a more compatible user with the other users in there, then something's gonna have an in and out in the morning, for the most part, the busiest part of their day. I think we need to keep in mind, if something's gonna go in there, it could be a lunch spot. If they don't go in, there could be a lunch spot, right? Then what happens? Then you get, then you get everyone jammed up at lunchtime in there, I think, and I think Ernie made a good point, I think most of the traffic in the morning is gonna be, is gonna be north, north to south, you know? And, and that's a big plus for entrance and exit of that location in there. So, I mean, again, I, I think everyone needs to keep in mind, we're, we're gonna see something, and they're gonna leave it vacant. So, you know, you know, what's the best type of compatible use we can see in there? And I, I see this as a compatible user in there, and a clean user, which I like, like to see a, you know, a, you know, a dry cleaner go out and a coffee shop go in, I guess it's a, you know, to me, a much better use, but that's probably only because I don't spend the money to dry clean my shirts, but.
But you look great now, anyway.
Yeah, thank you. For a guy with wrinkles.
Ms. Ullman?
No, I mean, I second what member Mpemba said, that I, I think this is a very exciting venture. I think the parking lot area does remind me a little bit of the plaza on Wind Street, where it is, it gives me anxiety every time I go, but at the same time, there, there has to be a way to figure this out. I don't think it's a matter of if, it's just a matter of how, whether it's like employees park in the spots all the way in the back, or the ones all the ways in the, basically the nuanced spots, or is there a way to, I don't know if this is allowed, even like cut back the curb a little bit to allow for a little bit easier in and out? I would probably encourage a, I don't know if we can, but a no-left-turn sign during certain times of the day, so that we're not backing up the parking lot. But, couple questions. What are your, I know you said that might be changing, but what are your anticipated opening hours?
Right now, I have six to five.
Okay.
And the reason is because on the early, on the afternoon, late afternoon, we might have people that are just doing design stuff, that's, that's basically, but not concerned for so much use on the coffee bar, on the coffee portion on the afternoon, and that's the reason I have those hours.
Okay. Perfect, and snow management, is that currently handled by you?
It's contracted out to a private.
Okay, so that, that would stay the same as what it was with the previous?
As well as trash and refuse.
Okay.
That's contracted out, built into the, all the leases.
And member Natola actually sparked another question, not necessarily about takeout, but would you be doing delivery through DoorDash or anything like that?
As far as I have researched, not a lot of, I think not a lot of apps, those type of apps, are available in certain locations, so I don't think we have fully availability of all the apps. If something can be done in a way that works out, I think it's good, because it can serve the community around, but I have to confirm how, confirm how many apps are available for that, the area, and I would do it if, if they work well.
Okay, I think that would introduce a whole other concern of delivery drivers, kind of in and out, in and out, but I was curious what your initial plan was. And then, wanted to, I have in front of me comments from the various boards in town. Have you seen all of the comments?
Yes, I have.
Does Mr. Travers been aware of all the comments?
I can't say I've seen all the comments, I've seen a couple of comments.
Okay, I can, I can go through a few of them.
Please.
So, Building Department, parking space number 15 does not comply with accessible parking. I did see Raquel had replied saying there are two accessible parking spots, but they're not noted on the site plan, so that would have to be updated. Restroom must be accessible. Again, Building Department, same comment. From DPW, standard, will need to address sewer allocation. Police Department, I know staff is going to be talking with them, but they did have concern over parking spots to accommodate seating capacity, but as we just discussed, technically, there are enough spots. It looks like they just had the wrong number of seats. Bar Department, no comments or concerns. Board of Health, standard, you'll have to follow all the rules for permitting. Board of Health, standard, comments, conservation, had no comments.
And, please.
And then, we received today a letter from the owner of Touch of Midas, you want me to read the letter?
Please.
Okay. To whom I may concern, has been brought to my attention as owner of a Touch of Midas Jewelers at 271D Cambridge Street, that there's a proposal being brought in front of the Planning Board for a 21-seat coffee shop for the empty unit here in our small four-unit building, with a total of approximately 20 parking spots for the whole building, that leaves each of the four units with five spots available for both owners, employees, and customers. I have the handicapped accessible spot, not handicapped, but directly in front of my door, which immediately puts me at a disadvantage, and lowers my available spots down to four, compounded with the fact that the Burlington Jade has five employees' cars parked in our lot at the same time I wrote this email. With the restaurant, and this email's written at 3:49 PM. With the restaurant's customers added traffic, the hair salon and myself are at a huge disadvantage, and more than once has there been a traffic incident where there has been an accident or damage done to one of our personal or customer cars. I beg the Planning Board to consider this information, and consider that my parents and now myself have been building this store for almost 50 years, and if I and one employee were to park here for a workday, it would leave less than two available spots for clientele. It has been also brought to my attention in numerous occasions by customers that they won't come here strictly because of the, quote, "death-defying parking," close quote, as one customer put it. I'm at the board slash property owner's mercy here, and I'm afraid that if this is allowed to happen, I'm going to be forced to close or move this 50-year-old business, which has been a cornerstone in Burlington for decades. Thank you in advance for your time and attention to this possible life-changing situation here in our building, sincerely yours, David Milano.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Lu, do you want an additional comment?
I had a question and a comment. It seems to me, the comment is, this seems like the perfect opportunity to take advantage of our parking agreement bylaw. I mean, there's a parking lot right next door that's quite large and hardly ever full. Is that something you would be willing to pursue with your neighbor?
I would certainly take it under consideration, I'd share it with, with my family. Again, let me stress the point that that facility is the primary means of income for my 88-year-old widowed mother. I'm sure she would be agreeable to some reasonable accommodations, but I can't speak to her wanting to invest thousands and thousands of dollars.
I'm just thinking, if you could come up with an agreement, even if it were to allow all the employees to park at the site next door, that would really free up the space. So, it's something I think it's worth pursuing, because I think what you're hearing from this board is everyone loves your concept, but we're worried about parking. If you can address the parking problem, I think the hurdles go away.
Yep.
And then, I had another question for you, since you'd said you're six to five, and that in the afternoon, there'd be more people there for design. So, are you expecting this to be almost like an artist's retreat, where people do create art in your space, or is this just for people to observe art?
I'm expecting to have art to be observed. We are designers, I have two other people that we work together, so I was expecting working, switching from home office and working there sometimes, and meanwhile, we will have one barista or two, depending on how many people, how many people we have coming in, to, to work on the coffee shop, serving, as well as I expected myself to, serving. It's basically that we want, we want to have one to two seats, where we can actually work on design, and having all the place referring to this style of art and coffee, and that's basically that.
So, a small portion of the café would be for people who are actually creating art?
Correct.
You and perhaps a couple of others?
That's correct, yes.
I was just curious, it sounds very interesting. And I, I, if, if this all works out, I would love to come and work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lu, our resident art expert. She has a lot of interest in art.
I love it, I don't, I can't do it, but I love it.
I'm not sure they do sculptures.
Maybe little ones.
So, thank you, as, as Ms. LaRue was talking initially, I had written down prior to her commenting about the shared parking, so I put that as well, I put shared parking for that particular site. Again, if this can be some arrangement, I think we'll have a lot of success there. The one thing I noted here was that it's in the town center, and, but they're not doing anything to the building itself, right? So, it's, the only reason why it's coming to us for a site plan is because there is no, there was no updated site plan. So, typically, what we would do, if there was something to building, we'd create, you know, pitched roofs, and we'd make it something, you know, a little bit different there, but because they're not doing anything to the building, you know, I, I wouldn't necessarily be inclined to say, now you've gotta do a pitched roof or things, but it could be things like landscaping out in front, I know in the past, you've, you've put down like a. I know in the past, you've put down like, you know, buckets filled with flowers or things like that. If there's a way right on the grass strip there to maybe put some low shrubs to make it, you know, to dress it up a bit, and you know, from an artistic standpoint, to really make it look welcoming. Again, not to get in the way of traffic, so I'm not necessarily asking for any big trees there, although I know Mr. Mpeba might. I'd be inclined to, but, you know, to get visibility to the stores, to keep that visibility, which I'm sure the other tenants would appreciate, but again, to soften that entrance up there with some, you know, we have, we could probably provide them with some standard recommendations with.
Yeah, so part of the town center rules and regs is that we do need to have a landscape plan.
Okay.
And I have spoken with both of the applicants about that, so that's kind of in the works.
Okay.
And then we did talk about enclosing the dumpsters. So we did talk about that, just, you know, kind of basic stuff. I know, I know, like, I know that they're not, you know, they're not doing a huge, you know, redevelopment of the site, but just kind of small things can make a really huge difference.
Get your brother-in-law off this, like, get him on the landscape deal over there. He should be able to do something over there.
He's only allowed to get involved in certain projects.
That's Greg, so Greg Hickox, who has some subdivisions in town.
Off of Chandler, I think.
He's running, bro, he's married to my sister.
Ah, sorry about that.
Unfortunately, it was my doing thirty-seven years ago.
No, I don't know Greg that well, but, so we, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the, in here online that would like to speak in favor against this? Anyone in public? No? Anybody online?
Let me stop sharing.
Thank you.
And see, I don't see anybody with their hand raised online.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six, zero, zero. Thank you very much, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, minutes, September nineteenth minutes. Anybody read them, comments, or good?
I'd love to abstain, because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Can I make the motion?
You can make the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, nope. So you're abstaining, so six, zero, one, thank you.
Five, zero, one.
Five, zero, one, thank you. Woo-hoo, thanks. Other matters, town center middle housing, Steph.
So I, I got comments from Barbara, I'm getting, comments are trickling in, thank you guys for getting them into me. So, high level, so the, what I sent you, which is twenty pages and a lot, is a, it was taken from the Town of Amherst downtown design guides. And the reason why I sent you twenty pages is because, you know, this is, we're trying to put this into the town center. I do have, you know, in the back of my mind that we might be looking at, you know, twenty years of town center, town center two-point-oh, should we do a look again? You know, things have changed, times have changed, the markets change. So just kind of some design concepts that you'll see, and also some similar design concepts that you'll see in what Melissa sent you as well, they're very similar. So I'm still going through all of your comments, and I will have answers to you, but I think that we should probably figure out a time for the next subcommittee.
Can we discuss timing in general?
Yes.
Because, well, because I also want to discuss, so January, we'll have the mixed use. We'll have next on the agenda, the EDU bylaw. I am concerned about with those two things already having to be discussed in January, this being too much for town meeting.
Too much, yeah, multiple, multiple houses.
An EDU with no choice, that has to go in January, mixed use, it's been a very long time.
I agree that those other things have to happen. I hate to push this back again, because originally, when we started talking about this, we wanted it to go in September. And we delayed because we didn't want to go at the same time as the malls rezoning, which was supposed to go in September, so we decided to wait till January, and then mall got pushed back to January. And if we push it back to May, the problem with May is it's going to be three to four nights, we're going to be on the last night, and nobody shows up, and nobody wants to talk about zoning on the last night of May town meeting. I get your concern, though, and one of the things I've actually talked with staff about is that I think it's really important, if we move forward with this, that the middle housing warrant has to go before the whole mall rezoning, because it's my opinion that our, if we move forward with this, it's small enough and targeted enough that it's not going to impact the mall rezoning, but the mall rezoning could impact this, because it's, they're talking about a lot more housing, and it's a lot more to digest, and I'm concerned that town meeting may have their fill of that and not want to move forward with this.
How do we, how does it get an order of town meeting? Is that the moderator's decision?
Yeah, just like at yours, as the chair.
Okay, at the pleasure of.
I thought it was the selectors' decision, no?
Well, they vote them in, and I think they put together the timeline, the order, but.
You had told me that we would have control of this.
I mean, I could, I mean, we can always, I mean, the thing is, we can ask, but I can, I could never guarantee anything, Barbara. Like, I mean, I can do what I can do, but I can't guarantee it.
I understand your concern, but I think pushing it back to May is also a bad idea. So then we're talking about waiting a year. And I, I would hate to wait a whole year for something that we actually could have done in September. If we had moved forward, we put it off because of the mall rezoning. I'm reluctant to do it, but, you know, I'm only one member of this board, and we'll have to see what everyone else thinks.
If we do it and it fails, can we do it again in September?
I don't know the answer.
I think that.
You don't have to.
I do, so I think that if it's something you don't think so, I.
I don't, I don't.
I think you can withdraw it, if it's going south.
I mean, I think that if it's, I mean, I think that if we're going to do a planning, a true planning effort on it, I think that, you know, starting off and kind of workshopping it and kind of getting a feel, you can always tell as you get closer to town meeting, kind of what the.
So we could withdraw it if we felt like.
Withdraw, if we felt, I mean, ultimately, I'm, I'm going to feel like I'm in a similar position to you with the mall, you road, mixed zoning, because, I mean, I, I want to start, I would want, I want to start kind of looking at the town center, at town center two-point-oh, right?
I've been, I've been talking about this a lot with people in town, with town meeting members. I purposely sought out town meeting members who were really against the MBTA communities, because I wanted to talk to people who I perceived as people who would be against this. And what I was really surprised with, and when I first bring it up, and I talk about middle housing, no way, absolutely not, no more housing, but when I talk about the specific areas of town that are in here, and the reasons for it, and the type of housing, all the pushback went away. It makes sense for this part, these parts of town, and people see the value in it, and the neighbors see the value in it. So I would be really surprised if it was rejected by town meeting, as long as it's not after the mall rezoning, which is why I pushed, wanted to push it back, because I was chair at that time, pushed it back to January specifically so that we wouldn't be going at the same time as the mall rezoning. But how many, how long do we keep pushing it back because of circumstances? Can't go in May, because nobody wants to talk about zoning in May.
We did MBTA.
Now we're pushing it back a whole year.
Yeah, because we had to.
And they tried to push it back to September, remember? So it's, I'm worried that if we push it back, we're just not ever going to get to it, we're not going to do it.
Let's start with Ms. Covina, what's your thought?
I would, I would say probably go forward as if we were going to do January, and do January unless something happens, Barbara's getting a lot of pushback, and she seems to be pushing it, and she gets a lot of pushback because of the fact that the other one is also on the warrant.
Okay.
Or it's in the wrong order, and, you know, I would defer to, since Barbara's been out there pushing it, I would defer to what her.
Ms. Ludlin, comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it also still going in January. I'm actually more worried about it in relation to the EDU than I am the mall zoning, to the EDU, only because like the EDU is, is. Yeah, and like, well, I mean, more like, also, we can't restrict like anything with the EDU, so I'm worried people are going to freak out about that. First, first middle housing is the right course, where we're getting ahead of a lot of things, we have much more control. So, I mean, I think, I agree, I don't want to keep pushing it further down the road. I like your new suggestion of like, let's see what people say, especially as the EDU discussion picks up.
Yeah, EDU, people have to remember, if I can for a second, Mr. Chairman, that if we don't regulate it, then people can do whatever they want.
One hundred percent.
And I think that has to be very well pushed out there.
We want to get ahead.
Sorry.
Mr. Mpeba.
I, I agree, I think we should get on the track to do it, we can always take it off track.
Ms. Natola.
I agree. I think we've.
Please.
We've thought.
One more. Oh.
No, please go ahead, Tonya.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, we've pushed it off for a while, so it's worth a shot, so.
I would suggest it might be simpler if we do just the first two areas that we talked about, and not, and not do Rogers Piano at the same time. Because that's more contradictory.
Yeah, that's a hot one.
Grant and Terry.
Yep, Grant and Terry would be great. Let's do it.
So then, another thing that I wanted to talk about in this discussion, though, is I saw the, some of the comments that my fellow board members made, and I wanted to talk about the percentage of affordable, because I think that's going to be really important.
Yes.
And I want a higher level of affordable. We had to figure out where the line is, where it becomes unattractive to developers. And I don't know exactly where that line is, we know, hopefully, it's more than fifteen percent. I suspect it's less than twenty-five percent. I don't know where it is, and I think we probably should reach out to some developers and try to have a conversation about this, because we don't want to make it unattractive.
What did I read, about Connecticut or something that had a higher level at one point? Connecticut or Rhode Island, one of the states down there has a higher level than the ten or fifteen, I think it was around twenty?
Yeah.
We're doing twenty-five now for rental units, and they are being dealt.
Yeah.
Well, and I like, I like it for the rental, the rental, I would like to see a little bit more affordable.
We've been doing twenty-five percent for rent.
For twenty-five percent.
No, I'm talking to the forty-B one.
Oh, the fortyBs, yes, fortyBs.
We got Northwest Park, I don't know what it was.
I can't remember what we got, it wasn't twenty-five.
A little background on why that number is in there, again, it was a placeholder, again, this was kind of throwing it at the wall, see what sticks, see what, so that twenty-five percent is because the zoning district in Amherst is a forty-B, forty-B, a forty-R district, which means that you, it's a district that allows more dense development in a particular area. And so by allowing more density, you also offset that by requiring higher numbers of affordable units. But again, that, nothing is set in stone, and that number is totally flexible.
But we're going to have to pick one.
Yep.
I know.
Before January, and I suspect it's somewhere between fifteen and twenty.
Yeah. Yeah.
And maybe we shop it around and talk to some builders and try and get some feedback. Of course, they're always going to say less.
Oh, great.
But.
And also, I mean, I know that there are definitely different organizations that have their head to the ground that aren't so focused on, on their bottom line. You know, there are some planners that are kind of definite, housing planners that are more in the field, and some trade organizations that.
So can we get this done in time?
I think so, I want to make sure, so we have, there's one major property owner, the Grant Ave property owner, which is the Murray property. I think that I would want to just kind of call Mike Murray Jr. and just give him the lowdown and say, hey, like, is this, what do you think? It would just be an overlay, not going to do anything now, it's not going to really, but it gives you another option. Is that something you're?
It could be really interesting if you, if you wanted to have him come in for a meeting, I'd love to attend that meeting, because I really want to see how he reacts.
Right, I was even going to say, like, if we do a subcommittee meeting and just invite him, just to talk and just kind of pitch the idea.
Because if, we could get some really valuable feedback about what we're doing.
Right.
Subcommittee of?
Me and.
You and anybody else.
Ernie, isn't it?
There it is.
Yeah.
Can I ask staff a question on affordable?
Please.
You had, the affordability expires after thirty years?
That used to be the case for fortyBs back in the day. Nowadays, newer fortyBs.
Right, that was in what you sent to us.
Okay, so it should be in perpetuity.
Oh, in the document, yeah, so it says something about thirty.
The year, year, okay, so, okay.
So that was unintentional.
Yes, yes, no, no, we want, no, we want perpetuity, oh, a hundred.
Although I don't know what the phrase is now.
But, yeah, we're not going to let that expire, no, no, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
For those of you who haven't had a chance to give your comments to Liz, we're on a really tight deadline, please get back to her.
Okay, great, thank you, ADUs.
Again, this is kind of similar to recreational marijuana. I want to convene a bunch of staff from different departments to talk about this. I've already had a meeting with the building department, I want to talk to DPW and assessors just to figure out how they plan on handling metering, so like electrical metering, you know, building code stuff, and then, you know, how the DPW handles water metering and how, you know, and then how the, just for my own information, just how the assessor will be assessing these and how they'll be considered going forward. So from, basically, what our current EDU bylaw has is that the EDU must be, it has to be, I think it has to be owner occupied, like, it has to be relationed, but how we, how you, you can't really enforce that. It is that it has to be attached to the, to the, made the larger dwelling unit. It doesn't?
It doesn't have to be, today, the accessory units have, they have, they can only, they're basically set up physically like a, like an in-law apartment, but, but you can lease it out to anybody.
Yeah, but they have.
As long as you're living there.
Right.
It just needs to be attached, though.
It has to be attached.
Yes.
No, but you said that.
Yeah, I think I did misspeak here, right, General?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's, right, and it's got to be owner occupied in the unit, in the primary unit.
The primary unit.
Has to be owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
And you can lease it out to an unrelated party, which is the only difference between that and the, and the in-law, is that it's got to be an open door in between, and it's got to be a related.
Right.
Right.
Family member that, and then a two-family can be.
Right.
No owner occupied, lease it out to two separate people.
So I think that we want to keep most of that. I think that the design piece, I think that, you know, based on, you know, being around, around here for ten years, I think that we would want to keep these things attached.
Are we allowed to say owner occupied, require owner occupied in the main unit?
Um, I need to double-check on that, I know that you can't require that the person living in the EDU be like related.
Or even if we, if even if we require that the owner is in one of them, like, I don't care if the owner's in the EDU and they rent out the bigger part of the house.
But this is something that we, we have to draw up as a part of the subcommittee, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I also, I also don't know if we are allowed to prescribe ownership in the zoning.
In the state, according to the state, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, if we can't, if we, I believe that we cannot prescribe ownership to land in our zoning bylaw, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, I believe.
But we do currently.
There's a, I don't think that bylaw's been touched.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a weird, there's a weird, also in the bylaw, there's a date by which you're allowed to, or something. There's a date by which you're allowed to do it, if your house was built after or before.
Yeah, I think there is something.
Is it allowed to do what?
Built, there's a year by which you're allowed to build an EDU on your house, if your house.
Nineteen eighty-seven.
If your house was built.
Before nineteen eighty-seven.
And it's a certain square footage, you can have an EDU, but if it's after that, you can't.
You're out of luck.
Yeah.
Makes no sense.
And what, Ernie, do you know why?
So new houses wouldn't be built with accessory apartments on them, I don't know why, or, I don't know.
I mean, it was basically a grand. I mean, it was basically a grandfather clause.
Yeah.
Probably when the law went into effect, where they changed the law, just like, you know, if you go back to the fifties, with lots splitting, you know, when they changed the law in the seventies, I think seventy-two or whatever it was,
Yep.
it was grandfathered in, so they must have, that's, had to be a change in that bylaw at that point in time.
Almost like we were making it so difficult that nobody would do it.
You guys never...
But I'm, I'm wondering if it, it probably has more to do with, are you sure if the house was built or if the ownership is? Because it would have to be continual ownership. If you purchased the home before the bylaw, typically, it's our grandfather.
I thought it was built, but I'm not sure.
Never look at this section of the bylaw, because it's the building department's stuff.
So, you're going to have an internal meeting, and then the ADU subcommittee has to meet.
Yes, and it's Jess and Barbara.
I think I'm on it.
Yeah.
It sounds about right.
Or Jeff.
It'll also be public.
Yeah, they'll be public.
It's me and Jess, yes.
You and Jess, and then there's a third, I can't remember what it is, off the top of my head.
But you're going to call, after you have the internal meeting, you'll then set up the first subcommittee?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It may be dope, actually.
And the, um, the, our town council has kind of given us a draft.
Oh, good.
Something to use, which is great.
Okay.
Um, I, um, you know, tell me if I'm going down the wrong path. A lot of people, um, I think that keeping it attached, I think from what I've heard, um, from Town Meeting members and talking about housing and ADUs and just shopping it around, even before this law came into effect, people are concerned that now, you know, if you allow ADUs, you're going to be, it's going to be a two-family neighborhood instead of a single-family neighborhood.
Yes.
Yeah, and that...
The panic-stricken calls that I have received have all been regarding unattached ADUs.
Okay.
So, that is, that, okay, good. You're confirming my suspicion.
So, they want them.
No, they, people that have been...
But they don't want them.
They want the ADUs to have to be attached as opposed to separate buildings on the lot.
Interesting.
That's just the people that I've talked to, that it's not a representative sample, you know?
Because you're probably less likely to, like, lease it out to a complete stranger as attached.
And it would be like flooding the lot.
I think what they were, more what people were saying is, it looks like a single-family home.
Yeah.
Whereas if there's another building on the property now, it doesn't look like a single-family home. It looks like
Two houses on one lot.
Two different houses on one lot.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Um, and so, and thank you, Barbara, for confirming my suspicions about that. And that was, um, something that I was going to do. Um, again, the, um, building department, you know, you have to have a firewall separating the two. There are certain building codes for this. Um, as far as the electric meter is concerned, um, the building department is of the opinion that if you have an ADU, it should not have a separate meter. And, um, I've yet to determine what the policy will be with the, um, DPW for water meters.
But we are allowed by state law to say it has to be attached?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, yeah, I believe so. I mean, that's, the, the, they have not, so that, the caveat, obvious, always a caveat. The, um, there have not been rules and regulations promulgated, so we just have the law. So, with, um, MBTA communities, you had the law itself, and then you had all these regula, rules and regs, just, just like we're going to do with the mixed-use zoning district.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we don't have those. I don't know if the state, if the EOL JLC is going to do that. I, um, assuming they learn their lesson with MBTA communities, so, we're just, you know, hoping that we're not, they're not going to put the, throw something out there, um, in the next two months. But, um, we are lucky, because we have a January Town Meeting. This goes into effect in February. A lot of towns are kind of scrambling, because by February second, the building department will have to
Right.
Yeah.
Address. For permitting these.
Allow permits for these.
Yep.
So, um, so I will get back to you, um, on the timing of that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Great.
So...
Go ahead, please.
One of the meetings, you said, are going to take place next week. Do you know when? About, I think you said the Mar, was it the marijuana?
So, those are the two, they're all going to be internal, just to make sure staff is on the same page, and we, you know, everybody understands.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to worry about the...
No, no.
I was just curious.
Um, but also, I feel like if we are going to do the, a marijuana subcommittee, um, probably on a Wednesday in the evening, because I feel like, um,
You get staff, yeah.
I'll be here, but also, I feel like people, you know, it's, it's more public.
Yeah.
It's more accessible. It's, um...
Because I think it's going to impact the town a lot, so I think you're going to get a lot of people to want to participate, or at least
Tune in.
Voice their opinions.
Yeah, so...
I mean, between you and me, I, I'm on all of these subcommittees. The ADU and the middle housing, in my opinion, we're, we're under the gun with those. I'm not in much of a rush on recreational marijuana, because there's no way we're going to go in January anyway.
Yep.
No, it would be really, yeah, no. It's, it's not ready for prime time.
Yeah. Okay.
There's a lot that needs to happen.
Okay. Correspondents, no? Reports from Town Council, no? Yes, Barbara?
I have a question for staff. Do we have any idea if the hybrid meetings will be continued past March?
So, um, from what I understand, based upon legislative update webinars, is that it was part of the legislative agenda for them to vote on at the end of Ja, July, and they, like...
Left a lot on the table.
They left it on the table, because they were up until two AM.
Yeah, I heard about that.
Like, it was kind of a mess over there. It sounds like a mess.
My daughter was there till...
Yeah, I, yeah.
Waiting, waiting.
And so, I think that it's something they, um, they are considering taking up. It's something that I think that, you know, we should probably impress upon, um, our legislators, that we need to do it. Um, so, you know...
So, we should reach out to Ken Gordon?
Yeah, so if you, if you, you know, if you want to call Ken Gordon and say, hey, can you get on this? Because I think...
I'm sure, short of any of our calls, if you think they're going back after they've had a taste of that, I highly doubt it. Most of Boston is still working
Yeah.
from home in all their meetings, so I don't see that changing
Right, and I also...
Anytime soon.
Agreed. I think that it adds, you know, I think allowing more people to have access to our meetings and then, you know...
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
The reps have to be there in person for their meeting.
Yep.
But they should.
Oh, good question. Uh, unfinished business, and I just have one new business. Was that the UPS store down in Tire Records the other day? And the, the spot in front of the UPS store had a orange cone in it. Right? So, I go, what's that for? Which I knew exactly what this was, because when the truck comes in to, to load and unload for that particular store, he, uh, takes up so much space that he's got to, and, and if there's no space for him, then he's got to go down, or he's got to go, you know, pretty far away to unload, so they're reserving that spot for him. I said, also, how many times it comes? Well, it comes three, maybe four times a day, but the space has a cone.
Three, four times a day? I thought you were going to say a week.
No, no, I mean, you, you, you'd, a lot of drop-offs there.
Probably on my packages.
It brought mine, too.
That's one, that's one time a day for her.
Just for her. So, so it's, so they, they keep that spot, which was open for the time I was there. And I, I have seen the truck there, you know, so I understand the need for that. So, may, my thought is maybe a minor engineering change for Bricks More to come in and just say, this is short-term parking for loading and unloading, or something like that, so when you get the people in. So, other people can come in except for the truck.
Um, yeah, I wish we'd seen, I, I just filed those decisions, I know.
Sorry about...
I know, it's not your fault. Um, that is good to know, but, I mean, um, yeah, I think, um, you know, minor engineering change or insignificant change.
Significant change. Really, it sounds like we all agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of unloading the packages, or just holding them.
Yeah, I think I won't get them on time.
But then it would give you, it'd give you a chance to pop into that spot.
Yeah, make my return.
Yeah, the truck comes in right after.
Yeah, so you just take...
Christmas time.
Don't you just...
It's her cone she puts in.
Yeah, exactly.
You just take the cone out and park, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, the, the person that said, well, they can, you know, people come in to remove it. If the trucks are out there, I go, okay, I know we're just going to do that, but...
Cheese Phil, this retirement, you're everywhere.
Hi, oh, you should see where I was.